See the lights on?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for the national anthem.
Say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous night O'er the land we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rockets' red glare, the bombs' heard singing in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Please be seated.
Should I stand up and attention move up high?
I might.
Is it on?
It is on.
They have to hear you in the back.
As the first order of business, it is my pleasure to administer the oath of office to our re-elected board members. Mr. Di Ambrosio, please raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Aye, Michael Di Ambrosio.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of New York...
And the Constitution of the State of New York...
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties...
And I will faithfully discharge my duties...
Of a member of the Board of Education...
As a member of the Board of Education...
Of the Oceanside Union Free School District...
Of the Oceanside Union Free School District...
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Let it be known that... Let it be known that Justin is shaking and I'm not.
I am not shaking. Okay, so you can sign this one right here. Mr. Transom, can you please join me?
I thought you'd get to me.
Thank you. Not yet, no, sit here. Mr. Transom, please raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Aye, Robert Transom.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of New York...
And the Constitution of the State of New York...
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties...
And I will faithfully discharge my duties...
Of a member of the Board of Education...
As a member of the Board of Education...
Of the Oceanside Union Free School District...
Of the Oceanside Union Free School District...
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Can you sign here, please? Dr. Harrington?
Thank you.
I will now accept nominations for the position of the President of the Board of Education for the 25-26 school year.
I nominate Michael Di Ambrosio.
Mr. Di Ambrosio, can you please join me?
He took it away from me.
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor of Michael Di Ambrosio becoming president for the 25-26 school year? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. I declare Michael Di Ambrosio to be President of the Board of Education of the 25-26 school year. Mrs. Di Ambrosio, you have to take another oath. So this is the oath for the President?
Aye, Michael Di Ambrosio.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of New York...
And the Constitution of the State of New York...
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties...
And I will faithfully discharge my duties...
Of a member of the Board of Education...
As a member of the Board of Education...
Of the Oceanside Union Free School District...
Of the Oceanside Union Free School District...
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Can you sign here, please? Dr. Harrington?
Thank you.
Thank you. I will now accept nominations for the position of the President of the Board of Education for the 25-26 school year.
I nominate Michael Di Ambrosio.
Mr. Di Ambrosio, can you please join me?
He took it away from me.
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor of Michael Di Ambrosio becoming president for the 25-26 school year? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. I declare Michael Di Ambrosio to be President of the Board of Education of the 25-26 school year. Mrs. Di Ambrosio, you have to take another oath. So this is the oath for the President?
Aye, Michael Di Ambrosio.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of New York...
And the Constitution of the State of New York...
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties...
And I will faithfully discharge my duties...
Of a member of the Board of Education...
As a member of the Board of Education...
Of the Oceanside Union Free School District...
Of the Oceanside Union Free School District...
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Can you sign here, please? Dr. Harrington?
Thank you.
Thank you. I will now accept nominations for the position of the President of the Board of Education for the 25-26 school year.
I nominate Michael Di Ambrosio.
Mr. Di Ambrosio, can you please join me?
He took it away from me.
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor of Michael Di Ambrosio becoming president for the 25-26 school year? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. I declare Michael Di Ambrosio to be President of the Board of Education of the 25-26 school year. Mrs. Di Ambrosio, you have to take another oath. So this is the oath for the President?
Aye, Michael Di Ambrosio.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of New York...
And the Constitution of the State of New York...
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties...
And I will faithfully discharge my duties...
Of a member of the Board of Education...
As a member of the Board of Education...
Of the Oceanside Union Free School District...
Of the Oceanside Union Free School District...
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Can you sign here, please? Dr. Harrington?
Thank you.
Thank you. I will now accept nominations for the position of the President of the Board of Education for the 25-26 school year.
I nominate Michael Di Ambrosio.
Mr. Di Ambrosio, can you please join me?
He took it away from me.
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor of Michael Di Ambrosio becoming president for the 25-26 school year? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. I declare Michael Di Ambrosio to be President of the Board of Education of the 25-26 school year. Mrs. Di Ambrosio, you have to take another oath. So this is the oath for the President?
Aye, Michael Di Ambrosio.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of New York...
And the Constitution of the State of New York...
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties...
And I will faithfully discharge my duties...
Of a member of the Board of Education...
As a member of the Board of Education...
Of the Oceanside Union Free School District...
Of the Oceanside Union Free School District...
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Let it be known that... Let it be known that Justin is shaking and I'm not.
I am not shaking. Okay, so you can sign this one right here. Mr. Transom, can you please join me?
I thought you'd get to me.
Thank you. Not yet, no, sit here. Mr. Transom, please raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Aye, Robert Transom.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of New York...
And the Constitution of the State of New York...
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties...
And I will faithfully discharge my duties...
Of Superintendent of Schools...
Of Superintendent of Schools...
Of the Oceanside Union Free School District...
Of the Oceanside Union Free School District...
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Right here, Dr. Harrington, can you sign the book, please? Thank you. I will now accept nominations for the position of the President of the Board of Education for the 25-26 school year.
I nominate Michael Di Ambrosio.
Mr. Di Ambrosio, can you please join me?
He took it away from me.
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor of Michael Di Ambrosio becoming president for the 25-26 school year? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. I declare Michael Di Ambrosio to be President of the Board of Education of the 25-26 school year. Mrs. Di Ambrosio, you have to take another oath. So this is the oath for the President?
Aye, Michael Di Ambrosio.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of New York...
And the Constitution of the State of New York...
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties...
And I will faithfully discharge my duties...
Of Superintendent of Schools...
Of Superintendent of Schools...
Of the Oceanside Union Free School District...
Of the Oceanside Union Free School District...
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Right here, Dr. Harrington, can you sign the book, please? Thank you. I will now accept nominations for the position of the President of the Board of Education for the 25-26 school year.
I nominate Michael Di Ambrosio.
Mr. Di Ambrosio, can you please join me?
He took it away from me.
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor of Michael Di Ambrosio becoming president for the 25-26 school year? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. I declare Michael Di Ambrosio to be President of the Board of Education of the 25-26 school year. Mrs. Di Ambrosio, you have to take another oath. So this is the oath for the President?
Aye, Michael Di Ambrosio.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of New York...
And the Constitution of the State of New York...
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties...
And I shall faithfully discharge my duties...
Of a member of the Board of Education...
As a member of the Board of Education...
Of the Oceanside Union Free School District... According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Can you sign here, please? Dr. Harrington?
Thank you.
Nice job. Nice job.
It is now also my pleasure to administer the oath of office to the Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Phyllis Harrington. Dr. Harrington, please raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Dr. Phyllis Harrington.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of New York...
And the Constitution of the State of New York...
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties...
And I will faithfully discharge my duties...
Of Superintendent of Schools...
Of Superintendent of Schools...
Of the Oceanside Union Free School District...
Of the Oceanside Union Free School District...
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Right here.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. President.
I'm sorry. It's the President that does the.
The President, President.
President does it.
Michael, do it from your seat.
I'll do it by seat?
Yeah.
Yeah, do it from wherever you want. We'll be here all night.
So now, so now, now I need to vote for a position of Vice President for the Board of Education.
I nominate Stu Kaplan.
Done. Okay, and all in favor?
I second it.
Second it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so congratulations to Stu Kaplan on being Vice President. And now I'd like you to stand up. Over here. Raise your right hand. Aye.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Stuart Kaplan. Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of Vice President of Board of Education.
Of the Vice President of the Board of Education.
Of the Oceanside Union Free School District.
Of the Oceanside Union Free School District.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, Mr. Vice President. I guess we'll sign the book. We'll sign the book later. Yeah, no, definitely didn't do it. We're gonna go right here. We're good there? Yeah, but I'm, where am I here? At this time, I make a motion to approve a district clerk for the 25-26 school year.
Motion.
Second.
Any question or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. We're on F. A motion to appoint acting district clerk for the school year of 25-26 to act in the absence of the district clerk at no additional compensation. I take a motion.
I make the motion.
I second.
Any questions or comments? Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. We're on G. I'll take a motion to appoint District Treasurer for the 25-26 at no additional compensation. I'll take a motion.
Take that motion.
Okay, Bob?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yep.
Who is the District Treasurer? Should we be adding names?
The names are on there. It's.
It's in the resolve.
It's in the resolve. It's Darrell Coakley.
Dr. Coakley.
On the resolve? Okay, Bob, we okay on it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And any question or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Be resolved that Sabrina Jones be appointed as District.
Reimbus.
What? As Deputy District Treasurer for the 25-26 at no additional compensation?
Motion.
Take a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Resolve that Samantha Sannicore be appointed Treasurer and Controller respectively of extra classroom activities for the 25-26 school year at no additional compensation. I'll take a motion.
A second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Resolve that Frageren Farm be appointed as Counsel. Subject to terms and conditions of the retain agreement agreed by the Board of Education for the 25-26 for $24,500 plus hourly compensation for the extraordinary non-retainer services of $2.60 per hour for attorneys and $1.40 for legal assistant paralegals. I'll take a motion. I move it.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Right. Approve R.S. Abrams being appointed as external audit for the 25-26. I'll take a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Approve for Milwaukee Smith LP to be appointed as internal ordinance for the 25-26.
I'll move it. I'll move it. Yes.
I second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Motion, Mrs. Angela Isaac. As.
And Mr. Alton.
And Mr. Clayes be appointed internal claims order for the 25-26. I'll take a motion.
I move it.
Any questions or comments? Second.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Approve Rights Risk Management Company be appointed as workers' administrator for the 25-26. I'll take a motion.
Motion.
Second.
All question, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passed. Appointment to the firm of Hawkins, Dayfield, and Wood LP will provide legal services and counsel for the 25-26. I'll take a motion.
I'll make the motion. I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Approve for the firm of Capital Markets Advisors to provide fiscal services and consultation for 25-26. I'll take a motion.
I move it.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Approval contract renewal for Adorable Care Act, ACA, consulting with the Seneca Consulting Group for 25-26. I'll take a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Approve, approve contract renewal for the Omni Group to manage the 403B program for the 25-26. I'll take a motion.
Motion. A second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion granted. Approve a contract for the Professional Athletic Training Services, PLC, for the 25-26 school year. I'll take a motion.
I move it.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. 25-26 Oceanside Library Contract. I'll take a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. 25-26 School Meals Program Prices. I'll take a motion.
I'll move it.
A second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. 25-26 Use of Facility Fees. I'll take a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Approve the 25-26 Professional Development Plan. I'll take a motion. Take a motion.
I move it.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Approval of the 25-26 Academic Intervention Service Plan. I'll take a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Approval of the Annual Professional Performance Review Plan for Principals. I'll take a motion.
I'll make the motion. I second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Z. We're on. Approval for the Annual Professional Performance Review Plan for Teachers. I'll take a motion.
I'll move it.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Let's take a break a second. Feel like we're running a marathon here. All right. How we doing, Justin? Good? Okay, so we're gonna be moving on to double A, AA. Approve the 25-26 School Board Planning Shared Session Making Plan. So I'll take a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Approve for the 25-26 School Counseling Plan. I'll take a motion.
Make a motion. I second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Double C. Approve Groups to be Represented as the Board of Education, OSC, Well Council meetings. I'll take a motion. I move it. Okay.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yep.
Before we vote on this, it says the Oceanside Counseling Center representative. They've moved out of our building. Are they still sending a representative? Mrs. Previto, can you know? No, should that be removed then?
I don't, I think if we, I prefer that we keep it on in case they, I know they were looking for a place where they will be functioning out of, and I think the work will continue. We just, it's just not through the direct counseling center.
Okay.
I think it covers us if we keep it.
Okay. Then I'm fine.
Mr. Coakley, there's no, there's no funds attached that. We just use them as needed, correct?
Correct.
Okay, good. All right, so I took a motion. Who seconded it? Mr. Moreska?
Yes.
Okay. Well, okay, any questions or comments? That was done. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Approve a group through, no, we went that one already. DD. Approve to 25-26 Board of Education Agreement with Louis.
Regolia.
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 Regolia. I'll take a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Appoint the Title One Coordinator for the 25-26 school year.
I'll make a motion. I second.
And that's gonna be resolved, that will be doing it, Previto. That'll be doing that. We took a motion, seconded it by Laura. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. This is double F. Be resolved that Tina Murray be appointed Section 503 Representative for the 25-26 school year at no additional compensation. Take a motion. Tracy.
Tracy.
I'm sorry. Come on, move it.
I second it.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Resolve that Tracy Murray, Executive Director of Special Education, is appointed Medicare Compliance Officer for the 25-26 school year with no additional compensation. Take a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Double H. Appoint Investigator Dr. Joe DeRosa as Investigator for Sexual Arrestment Complaints for the 25-26 at no additional compensation. I'll take a motion.
I'll make the motion. I second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Appoint Records Management Officer for the 25-26 school year. I'll take a motion.
I'll move it.
Second.
That's gonna be Mr. Coakley. Dr. Coakley will be taking that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Do we want, we want enough people are doing it, okay? Resolve that Melissa Gray to be appointed Data Privacy Officer for the 25-26 school year at no additional compensation. I'll take a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. I resolve that Mary Hofflinger be appointed as the Purchasing Agent, the person responsible for purchasing supplies, equipment, services for the 25-26 year, 25-26 year at no additional compensation. I'll take a motion.
I'll motion. I second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Mention to approve designated depositors, depositors for the school year 25-26, which is a storey bank, City Bank, Capital Run, HBC, and so on. I'll take a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Established non-resident tuition for the 25-26 school year. I'll take a motion.
I'll make the motion. I second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Approval fees for the CARES program for the 25-26 school year. I will take a motion.
I'll move it.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. And approving mileage, compensation rate for the 25-26 school year. I'll take a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. 25-26 Musical Instrument Maintenance Fees.
Make a motion.
Take a motion.
I second.
Second. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Approve for schedule of regular and special sessions of the Board of Education for the 25-26 school year.
I move it.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Projects under Title I. I'll take a motion. Take a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Approve the authorized Treasurer to publish the annual fiscal report. And I'll take a motion.
Motion. I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Establish petty cash funds for the 25-26 school year.
I move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Authorize for the district to publish legal notices. I'll take a motion.
Motion.
Second. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Authorize President of Board of Education to execute tuition and other contracts. I will take a motion.
I'll motion. I second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Names and salaries all employees filed with the district clerk for the school year 25-26. I'll take a motion.
I move it.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Approve title, approve table of organization for the 25-26 school year. I'll take a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Adjust coverage provided by Section 18. I'll take a motion.
I'll motion. I second.
Did I say, did I say adopt?
No, he's.
What did I say?
I don't remember, but.
All right, whatever.
I read it. It's adopt.
So let's start over.
I motion adopt.
Adopt complete, provide, adopt coverage provided by Section 18. I'll take a motion.
I made the motion. I second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any opposed? Motion passes. Double Z.
A.
What? Double Z. Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Approve Massa Technology Center of Bosses to serve as Occupational Advisory Committee to the school year 25-26. I'll take a motion.
I move it.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Let's take a break. Fifty-four, we went through them like two seconds. We're on triple A, if anyone's following at home. Everyone all right? Approve to designate legislative liaison representative to Massa, Suffolk School Board Association, and New York State School Board Association. I'll take a motion. I'll take a motion.
Motion.
Well, okay. This is going to be for Stu Kaplan. Stu Kaplan will be our representative. So I'll take a motion.
Motion.
Stu?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Approval to authorize members of the Board of Education to attend conferences and meetings for the school year 25-26, and we have them listed. I'll take a motion.
Motion.
I second.
Good. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Appoint Board of Education members to district committee 25-26 school year, which we have them all listed. I'll take a motion.
I move it. Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. We're on triple D. Approve members of the Oceanside Committee on Special Education for the 25-26 school year. I'll take a motion.
Motion. Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Authorize the board president to appoint individuals to serve as internal hearing officers.
Impartial.
Impartial hearing offices. I'll take a motion.
I'll motion.
Good.
I second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Appoint impartial hearing officers on a national basis.
Rotation.
Rotation basis. I'm having a tough time with my screen. Okay, I'll take a motion.
I move it. Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Triple G. Approve members of the committee on preschool, special ed for the 25-26 school year. I'll take a motion. Take a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I second.
Any questions or comments?
I got excited.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Triple H. Approve related expenses connected to the representative for the state legislative network. I'll take a motion.
I move it. Second.
And that's going to be Mrs. Seamus Shoddy away. She's going to be appointed. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Triple I. Approve, approve Department of Community Activities Advisory Committee members for the school year of 25-26, and we have that listed out. I'll take a motion.
Motion. Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Approve each of the principals as the dignitary act coordinator in their respective buildings that list all our principals. I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Approve the teacher lead evaluators, TLE. I'll take a motion.
I move it. Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Approval of annual stipends. Nope, principal. Yeah, triple O. Yeah, I was looking at this one. Approval of the principal lead evaluators, PLE. I'll take a motion.
Motion.
I'll second that one. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Approval of the, of the annual stipends 25-26. I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Approval of salary relates, salary rates for hourly and per day personnel. I'll take a motion.
I move it. Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Appoint an NCAA replacement coordinator for the 25-26, and that will be Frank Luisi. I'll take a motion.
Motion. Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Accept the board policy manual for the 25-26 school year. I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. I don't think that's it. It concludes the reorg meeting. Tough time with the screen, I'll tell you that. We'll all sit down here? Okay. We'll sit down here?
Yep.
Good? All right. We're on five, number five for the reports and presentations.
Yes. So, Matt, do we have that document that we can put on the screen? So this is the time of year that we very, very briefly summarize where we are with our final goals update for the 24-25 school year, which has just concluded. As is customary, our document is incredibly comprehensive and incredibly thorough, and it will be on our website for anyone to, to look at in greater depth. The only things I wanted to focus on now, Matt, are you able to get it? Is it up there? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. So just, we can flip through. The point I really wanted to make is, as you go through these goals, we take very seriously that a goal very rarely can be met in one year's time. So it's typical that a goal carries over into further years. So we identify our goals as either met or in progress. So as we, as we go through the curriculum instruction and assessment goals, I'm very proud that we've completed our global citizenship course curriculum. But you'll notice that our computer science and digital fluency standards and coding is a goal that is still going to be in progress. When we do our goal setting for this school year, which will happen in the September meeting, you will see that goal reintroduced and as we are in the final stages of that. We also are very happy where we landed with our UPK curriculum, our universal screener acadians. Another in-progress goal has to do with our work with word study or words their way. We have completed our K6 social studies curriculum updates, again, with great input from Mitch Bickman. Of course, all of these areas are under the able leadership of Ms. Previto. Similarly, our phys ed new standards, the board has heard us speak to that on many occasions. We are now completed, and again, that is with the assistance of Mr. Lehman. We are made, have made a decision regarding the APPR that our system currently in place is the one we're going to keep in place, but we're going to continue to monitor where we think we are, where the state is. We've got much time before we need to make any, any significant change if in fact we were going to do that. In terms of meeting the needs of all learners, we have met our goal in improving our MTSS multi-tiered systems of support as well as our response to intervention. One of the things we introduced this year, which has been a huge success, is our Spire program, which is specialized program for individualizing reading excellence. It is a multisensory, Orton-Gillingham-based reading intervention program. That goal is still in progress, but it has hit the ground running, and we're finding it incredibly successful. Another in-progress goal is our elementary integrated co-teaching paradigm. And if I could just take a moment to remind the board that a couple of years ago, we made a commitment to ultimately moving to a full-time classroom teacher and a full-time special education teacher in the same ICT classroom. We knew we couldn't do that K6 in one, in one year's time because of the resources it would take. So it is a multi-year goal. It has been usually successful, and right now, our ICT program, using both the, the model we currently had in place, which was including teaching assistants, as well as the newer model of full-time teachers, will now exist at schools eight and school nine eight. As we move forward to our CRE work, you've heard us speak about that over the course of the year. Again, amazing, amazing work under the leadership of Ms. Previto, but that is an in-progress goal as well. One of the things that was very successful this year, and we're excited about, and we're excited about continuing the conversation, has to do with challenging grading and assessment myths. We had a professional development opportunities well received by our teachers, and now we're going to phase that into conversation at the department level, particularly at the high school. Moving on to social and emotional literacy, another goal in progress, you've heard us speak about dialectical behavior therapy. Again, we're very pleased with that intervention, and we're going to look to further introduce that across the board going into next school year. In terms of professional learning, this was the first year we had a full-time technology instructional coach that has been hugely successful. Much of it has to do with the person selected for the position, which is a very young teacher, but someone who has made her way, K-12, into teachers' classrooms. She's in high demand for a whole host of reasons, but we're incredibly happy that we made that decision. That goal is met. You've heard us speak about responsive classroom, another intervention that has been, hit the ground running and has gotten us huge and very strong support. That is a goal in progress. You'll be hearing more about that. In terms of communication, this was the first year that we introduced Parent Square. That happened seamlessly, and it has just been an improved way for us to be able to communicate with our parents. Our special education department continues to find ways to improve parent communication as well. In the area of technology, it suffice to say that you will be hearing much more about artificial intelligence as it relates to what's happening in our classrooms. We are proud of what we've done, but it is certainly just scratching the tip of the iceberg that will be a goal in progress. As we move on to community outreach, I was so proud of us that I feel that we, we began the conversation about the anxious generation and about the input and impact of social media and personal electronic devices on our students. So when, we were very well prepared and armed when the ultimate policy and law came down from the state, but part of that has to do with the work of parent university, and we're very, very appreciative of the parents who are intimately involved with that, and again, under the leadership of Ms. Previto. In terms of community outreach as well, a huge kudos to the special education department because the parent workshops there, as you can see by the percentages of participating parents, has grown exponentially. Very proud of that. In the area of facilities, we met a number of goals. As you well know, our Oceanside Middle School Library, our work with the Energy Performance Contract, our beginning projects, which is the turf field at school three, and of course, one that I know we're very anxious and awaiting, is the turf fields at our baseball and softball fields, which will happen over the course of the summer and going into the school year. And of course, we've already completed our full tennis court renovations. Very happy about that work, and again, I kudos to Dr. Coakley, but our director of facilities as well and his support system. And the area of safety and security, once again, I appreciate the board's support for our continued efforts working with Altaris and our director, Mr. Sean Sharkey. We feel that we are in great shape when it comes to that. You can never do enough, so we will continue to improve on those areas, but in terms of the work we had outlined for the year, we had met those goals. the work we had outlined for the year, we had met those goals. So in conclusion, again, there's a lot to digest. We have success indicators for each and every one of these goals that I mentioned, and this document is and will be available on our district's website, as well as this board agenda, as soon as this meeting is concluded. I will certainly now entertain any questions any board member may have. Okay. So is it okay to move on to? Oh, okay. It should be.
Move on to Sandy.
Yeah, no, can I do early drop-off?
Sure.
No, no, go to Sandy.
You could jump to early drop-off as long as you'd like.
So I'm sorry, actually, the way it's on the agenda is the way I said, because they looked tired of hearing from me, but I'll continue. So we had done a survey within the last month, asking our elementary parents their interest in a different type of morning program. We did receive over 300 responses, which is a good percentage for our community and based on other surveys we've done, but I am here to say that, given the analysis of the data, it's very, very clear that there are definitely some community members that would welcome an earlier drop-off time, but a significant number are either satisfied with the current model we have, which is a 7:30 a.m. breakfast program at no cost to the parents who drop their kids off at 7:30. Either people are very happy with that plan or don't have the need for a plan. If we were to move it to an earlier drop-off time, it would require a fee, and that seemed to be something that was of concern to parents in terms of us changing the structure. So at this point, I am prepared to recommend that we do not have sufficient reason to alter our practice. We will continue with the existing early drop-off model for the upcoming year. However, I feel it's incredibly important that we recognize the importance of remaining responsive to the evolving needs of our families, so we will continue to monitor participation, gather feedback, and explore alternative possibilities that can support all members of our school community. But that's my recommendation at this time. This, I will put the results of this survey actually on the website as well, so anyone interested can actually see the hard data that we saw as well. I'll entertain any questions the board may have about that.
Yeah, Dr. Harrington, thank you very much for that survey. I know the survey was well-represented through social media, it was well-represented through the district. I know that we had a lot of people that participated, and we do also understand the need of some of our community members, but of course, we try to do it the majority. So I appreciate the fact that we are going to continue to look into it and get some more feedback, and if there becomes more of an outcry for it, then we can do it. But at this particular time, we appreciate all the results, and please contact us if you have any other. I mean, it was a real good point that someone came up with, and we welcome these ideas anytime we can to the district to improve it or to keep maintaining what we're doing. Any other board members would like to make comment? Mrs. Shaw?
Yeah, I was, right now, I just want to make sure I understand. Right now, the 7:30 drop-off that the parents can do, that's, there's no additional cost for doing that, is that correct?
That is correct. We had made a decision to offer breakfast at a cost, and this is up to this year, that we would be able to absorb that half hour, 40 minutes, in our general operating budget.
For supervision.
With supervision, right.
Now, the breakfast will be free.
Breakfast will be free, and we will have to monitor whether that will increase our numbers.
Right.
Past history, when breakfast was free and lunch, we did not see those numbers escalate. That could change.
Right.
If those numbers increase dramatically, then we will have to look at an alternative model, because we won't be able to provide the support that we have.
Right.
The support we have right now won't be able to safely supervise a significant increase numbers of students.
Also, while we're talking about that and the cost, the, I just want to go back in my head for one minute, because, Dr. Cokely, the, I think I even asked you that question I called you, in the reorg package, when we okayed the, we just approved the prices, those were à la carte prices. They had nothing to do with the free, correct, lunch or?
Breakfast.
Correct.
That's correct.
Now, if they were, the survey was to start at 7 o'clock, and so that would incur a cost to the parents.
Yes.
And I, not for the food, but just for the supervision.
Correct.
And that would be in six buildings or five buildings?
We would like to have it equitable in all of the buildings. I will say, it's very.
I was very surprised at the cost, and I think that that shot, I'm not saying it's wrong, I'm just saying.
Right.
I think that's what turned a lot of people off, was the cost for that extra half hour, you know, for supervision.
Right.
I don't know if there's anything in the future we can do about that, if we can, you know, like I said, I think we need to keep our eye on this, as Michael said, and I think maybe we have to look to see if there's any grants or something that we can find that might help us reduce that cost to families, because, I mean, I remember, am I, it was $200?
We gave, we gave an average of what we anticipated, but if you did really the math and the breakdown of that, by hourly, it came out to, and I don't want to be held to this, but it was around $10 an hour, which was really, you can't get a babysitter for $10 an hour.
Right, so, but to the cost to the parent would have been about $200 a month, is that?
Correct, but for five days a week.
I just think it's thinned people, and I'm not sure they were past it.
It's along the lines of our after-school care program as well.
Yeah, okay.
But I'm going to say, again, I'm not saying that it's not, but people, perspective-wise, have to look at the whole picture as well, because if people did have to pay a babysitter, it would be, I think, significantly more than that.
Yeah, but right now, we are able to absorb the 7:30 drop-off.
Right now, given the numbers we currently have, we're able to do it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions from any board members? So we'll continue to look at these numbers and this whole program and breakfast and see if we can keep doing it. At this particular thing, board policies and a second presentation, Mrs. Shaw, can you go through those five policies?
I'll do it real quickly, because this is the second reading. I have received no further questions from last month's reading, and I don't believe Dr. Harrington or anyone else has gotten any additional questions or feedback. We presented five policies last month. One of them is just, the 6106, the fifth one, was really just, we revised our petty cash reimbursement cap from $25 to $50. Now, the first four policies that we reviewed, they are all required based on new legislation and new law, so we had to adopt these policies. And those policies are the sexual harassment and grievances under Title IX. We have the ex officio student member of the board policy. Even though we've been doing it for a year, more than a year, this is the first official year, Brian. And then the extreme heat conditions policy. And then the last is the student and personal electronic device policy. So those are all on our website, and you've had 30 days to read them and comment, and I think we've answered all the questions that have been brought to our attention, so tonight we'll be voting to approve these policies. That's my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Shaw. Does any board members have any questions? Dr. Harrington, we're good? We're good? Okay, we're going to go to, go ahead.
Can you?
Michael?
I don't see it as.
Hold on one second, we're looking for the resolution. There should also be a resolution to approve that, and I don't see it. Yes, okay, we're editing that, so we can go ahead.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to go on, we're good on 6A? Opportunity to comment on agenda items, we're good with this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any audience member wishing to make a comment on an item that is on tonight's agenda can do so at this time. Anyone wishing to make, what's the matter? Okay. Anyone wishing to make a comment on an item not on tonight's agenda will have the opportunity to do so later in the agenda. While New York State law doesn't require us to hold a public comment period on agenda items, this Board of Education chose to do so because we believe it's important to get input from community members on the board's agenda items. Please note that the board is here to listen. While everyone is encouraged to share their comments, please keep in mind that this is not designed to be a question-and-answer session. Again, comments should be directed towards the chair of the meeting, which is me. Anyone who wishes to speak should come up to the microphone, clearly state your name and your child's school, only on agenda items. If there are anybody who would like to come up and speak? Zina? We're going to start off with the approval of minutes for the June 11, 2025. I'll take a motion. Move it. Bob?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion passes. Acceptance of financial reports, treasury reports, transfer of funds and internal claims audit, review of warrants. I'll take a motion.
Motion. I'll second that motion.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion passes. Prove to accept donations of a trumpet. I'll move it.
I second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion passes. At this particular time, I take a motion to accept professional personnel recommendations. Move it.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Dr. Harrington?
Yes, we added an addendum, Mr. D'Ambrosio, for the board to accept a resolution at the recommendation of the superintendent, that Mr. Jarrett Rubin be appointed as associate principal at OHS.
The board has to, you clapped prematurely, the board has to approve the motion.
So I'll take a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I second.
Well, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion passes. Congratulations. We'd like to stand up, Jarrett. Thank you.
So, Mr. D'Ambrosio, if I may, just a couple of things. First of all, you know, this, I just want to mention that there are a number of actions under the professional personnel recommendations. We go through them rather quickly at our board meeting, and I just want to comment and compliment our personnel department because of, under the leadership of Dr. DeRosa, and of course, with our personnel clerk, Ms. Kramer. They really work around the clock to ensure that this is done efficiently and timely and accurately, so I wanted to shout out to them. At the same time, I then also want to acknowledge a couple of actions the board just took. One is the acceptance of the retirement of Amy Simon. Amy Simon is a beloved elementary teacher, currently at School 4. She's been with our district for many years. She's not going to retire officially until December, but we have now officially accepted her retirement. I do want to also point out that Luke Gackstetter, our dean at our high school, has resigned, but it is really for very good reasons. He's taken a position as an assistant principal in another school district. We wish him incredibly well. The board just hired a number of teachers, and there's one in the audience, Ms. Carly Stoles. Welcome, Carly, we're so happy to have you on board. Carly will be in the school counseling and guidance, health and wellness at our elementary level. We're very, very happy to have you, as well as so many of the other new teachers and teaching assistants that we have been able to hire, you know, that will hit the ground running come September. We're very excited about this new group of individuals. Thank you.
Do we stand up, Carly? Although you are. It's a lot. Okay. I have more technical difficulties up here, as you can see. 9B, so I'll take a motion for civil service personnel recommendations. Take a motion. I'll move it.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion passes. Dr. Harrington, and you? Take a motion for the hourly personnel employee recommendations.
C.
Civil service.
Yeah.
Take a motion for civil service, non-represented personnel.
Motion. Motion. Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion passes. Now we'll take a motion for hourly personnel employee recommendations. Take a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Sandy?
I second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion passes. I'll take a motion for summer school personnel recommendations. I'll move it.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion passes. I'll take a motion for DACA employee recommendations. Take a motion. Move it.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion passes. G, high school and middle school fall and winter coaching staff varsity and JV for 25, 26. I'll take a motion.
I'll move it.
I second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? And I will abstain. Motion passes. Recommendation for the CSE, CPSE chairpersons. I'll take a motion. I'll move it.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion passes. Items for action, 25, 26, updated student overnight trips. I'll take a motion.
Move it. Motion. Second.
Who did the first?
Me.
Stu, first and second. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion passes. Approval for property tax levy, 25, 26. I'll take a motion.
Move it.
Second.
Sandy, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion passes. Approved memorandum of agreement, teachers, fellows, OFT. I'll take a motion.
I'll move it.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion passes.
And Mr. D'Ambrosio, we added item D, a motion to approve and adopt the board policies as listed above, all the policies that Sandy reviewed, so you can ask for a motion for that.
Okay, so those are the five policies that we reviewed on the second one. I'll take a motion. Take a motion.
Move it. Motion. Second.
Okay, you got Seth and Stu? Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? And that motion passes. Opportunity for the superintendent of schools, Dr. Harrington.
So first of all, congratulations to Mr. D'Ambrosio, Mr. Transom, and of course, Mr. D'Ambrosio as well, and Stuart Kaplan in their leadership roles that they were just reappointed to. So it would be my pleasure and honor to serve all of you as the superintendent. It is the summer, I don't know how it happened, but it is, but those that know anything about Oceanside know that the summer is not a time for rest here in Oceanside. We have an active summer school that is beginning imminently under the leadership of Frankie Simmons, as well as our DACA summer program, which you know that we serve hundreds and hundreds of our students here under the leadership of Maria Bavaro and Dr. DeRosa, and we're very excited about those programs beginning on July 7. Welcome to Brian Wilesko, we're very happy to have you and look forward to, we know you have huge shoes to fill, but I think you know that, but really just wish everyone just a happy and healthy, and even though I said, yes, we have a very active summer, it's also an important time to take for your family and to enjoy and relax and become rejuvenated for another school year. That concludes my report, Mr. D'Ambrosio.
Very good, thank you a lot, Dr. Harrington, and of course, congratulations on you being sworn in again as our superintendent, and you're doing a great job for this district and hope everybody recognizes that.
Appreciate that.
We have Dennis O'Shavai, who retired. That's going to be going to George Washington. No, you cannot speak. Just sit there and be nice. Do we still have to take a bow? No. And we'd like to welcome Brian Wilesko, and Brian's going to be on a real new audition, and it's, he's really, we were one year ahead of the state in approving somebody to be on this board as a student rep, and Dennis was the first, but Brian, you are the official first representative on this board, and we thank you, we look forward to you running more section in the meeting. It's an honor and a privilege to have somebody on there, and we hope that you'll be giving us some feedback from your students and to bring it back to us, and we can maybe try to include some of their comments and concerns to make us grow better as a school board. So congratulations on that. With that being said, I would like to open up to my board. Sandy?
Yes, first of all, I'd like to publicly thank Laura Lisi and Tara Brash for doing an outstanding job this year, reorganizing Dawn Delirium at a brand-new venue, Bayview in Freeport, and I'd also like to thank the Bayview and its owners for working with us. It's not easy to take on the Dawn Delirium project of 400-plus students from 12:00 midnight till 4:30 in the morning, so they did an outstanding job. We have some glitches we have to work on, but all in all, it was a great night, and these ladies led the outstanding crew of volunteers that really made it work, and I think the kids all had a great time. So thank you for all your efforts, Laura and Tara, if you're watching. And also, I'd just like to acknowledge Sean Sharkey and our security crew. They were invaluable at this new venue. This was not an easy thing for us. If anybody's been to Bayview, it's a large facility, and it's very spread out with a lot of nooks and crannies, and Sean took the time, along with Keith McKeel, our associate principal, to go down there ahead with us and look at all the areas that we needed to cover, and then Sean brought down an outstanding security crew, some of our high school people and some of our district people, to cover our security that night, and these ladies and gentlemen did an outstanding job, and I want that to go on public record, because I don't think we could do it without them. And the other person that I think we need to recognize is graduation was a very hectic day, and I want to recognize Brendan Rooney and his and our custodial team in this district. Again, it was a hot day, and it was a difficult day, and they did a great job under the direction of, of course, Dr. Mitchell and our very own Kevin Carbonetti, who ran his last graduation with us, so, but I do want to recognize them, because they just did outstanding work, and that high school is always sparkling, and I think that that's a credit to Brendan Rooney and his staff, and I think that needs to be publicly recognized, too. I've never seen that high school look better, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Shaw. Don Mareska?
Well, I have a few things I'd like to say at this time. Won't take long. I just want to mention that after the last Board of Education meeting, I attended the school number five beginners concert, and my congratulations to the teachers, to Mr. Andrew Farbou and his student assistants Jennifer and Vicky, and especially to the students who gave a fine performance. Next came the Oceanside Castleton High School graduation barbecue, which was held at the Albert Eden and honored all 15 graduates this year. Mr. Simmons and his staff did a great job in setting up this festive program. And it was my pleasure to attend the moving up ceremonies, which were held at school number 2, 3, 4, 8, 9, E, and the 10 little school moving up ceremonies. And again, my congratulations to the administrators, the teachers, and all the members of the staff who made these programs very successful, and a very special congratulations to all the students moving to the next level of education. And I like to say, that was quite a high school graduation, you have to read it, so I'm sure, it was blown out there, but the excitement just radiated, and it was just wonderful. I have one more thing, I have one more thing to say about a student, but I'm not going to, because I'm a student, I better not, but this is quite an honor that this young lady received in a international gymnastic tournament, which was held in Las Vegas. Their team did very well, not a national tournament, international. So congratulations to that young lady, and I will not mention the staff members' name. Thank you.
Congratulations, Dr. Gerald Cokely.
Is the father a business official?
I just mentioned it, so I can do what I want. All right. Who's the, Bob?
No, I'm good. I think they said everything.
Well, you want more to explain?
Yes, no, I did thank you, Sandy, for that acknowledgement, and I did want to acknowledge and thank all the parent volunteers, the administration, Mr. Sharkey. I mean, this event was a huge event, and it could not have happened without everyone's support, so just thank you.
Mr. Bob? Good, and Stu? All right, let's get to the last part of this meeting, and that's the opportunity to comment on non-agenda items. Being that we only have a couple of people in here, but next is public comment on non-agenda items. It's the opportunity for anyone who wants to make a comment on any item that is not on tonight's agenda. As I previously mentioned, state law does not require us to hold a public comment period, but this Board of Education does so because we believe it's important to provide this forum to hear from our community members about concerns and issues. Having said that, please note that the board is here to listen. Comments should be directed towards the chair of the meeting, which is me. While everyone is encouraged to share their comments, please remember that this is not designed to be a question-and-answer session. If someone has a question that can be quickly answered, we will do so. Otherwise, the appropriate personnel will follow up on any issue. Lastly, please remember that the board cannot and will not discuss- Lastly, please remember that the board cannot and will not discuss personnel matters related to staff or students in public. Any parties wishing to come up to the microphone, please clearly state your name and child school. Cindy? Okay. Okay, with that being said.
I move to adjourn.
I will take a motion.
I move to adjourn.
Second it. Good night, everyone.